Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:31. And we're gonna start with public session, public input. Does anybody have any public input?
Oh, we're gonna do it now instead of the end?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I do. Last May, I attended the school board meeting and started talking about the health trust money and couldn't really come to an agreement. Mr. French said that he would try to get somebody, we'd get somebody in the summer to teach computers to the elderly, because I had said that we're at a disadvantage, we never got any training. He seemed to agree to it. Mr. Herron said that he would make sure that in the Carriertown News, there would be postings for the meetings in the future. Neither one of those things have happened. Meanwhile, I've gone and talked to friends and neighbors and told them all this was gonna happen. You know, this is an attack on my integrity now. I am very, very upset about this. I come to school board meetings thinking I'm gonna get the truth, and I'm not getting it. I just cannot believe, you people spend all this money on DEIJ. Where's the equity? Where's the inclusion? Where's the justice for the elderly people in East Kingston? We're treated like second-rate citizens. You know, you go over where I live and they don't want anything to do with you people, a lot of them. You know, we're sick of it, we really are. You know, I'll be ashamed of yourselves, with the exception of Tiffany. I don't know what to do at this point. You know, on the May meeting, if you go back and read the minutes, I thanked, you know, Mr. French profusely that he was willing to do something. I tried to work with you people, and it just, it never works. I don't know what you're teaching the kids, but, you know, if you can't be honest with me, are you being honest with the kids? I don't know what's going on here anymore. But I'm furious that my tax dollars are going to this school and I can't get a straight answer. I would like a letter to be posted in the Carriertown News stating that we were, we were promised that we'd get computer training this past summer. And we were promised that there'd be notices in the Carriertown News so that at least people can read that and know that I was not being untruthful with them. I don't know, I, I, I've just had it, I really have. It's really a shame. I don't-
Do you want me to respond to that?
Um, well, I'll, sure.
Do you wanna respond to the question?
So, yes, we did say that we were gonna have training over the summer. But I want to remind you of the side conversation we had, at your recommendation to have it in the fall, once we get back to-
You said that couldn't be done.
I didn't say it couldn't be done. The woman that offered to do the training was off for the summer. So I said to you, we can take a look at having the training once we come back, once she's back in school.
Were you that busy this summer, you couldn't send me an email saying, "Look, we're gonna do it in the fall"?
I left thinking that, at your recommendation, that we were gonna do it in the fall. I don't know what else to say. I'm sorry that your integrity was tarnished a little bit by that, but I'm being truthful when I say, at your recommendation, it would be better for the seniors in our community to have that training in the fall, once we were back in school, and these Zoom sessions and everything else were starting to happen again. I never forgot about the training for one bit.
I missed the email to get it into Carriertown for this meeting. My apologies.
Is it gonna be a letter written? The Carriertown News?
In the note, I will put in there, my apologies for missing it for this meeting when I sent it in for the-
Could we put something in there, like as previously discussed at a board meeting, we are gonna offer this training to the seniors and date and time, too?
Yep.
Yeah, I think once we have the commitment, I think it's because it's a volunteer that's doing this. This isn't us, we're not using school budget funds or anything to do this. I think we need to be, we need to accommodate Amy McDonald that offered to do the training for the time that will work for her. So I think once we get that narrowed down, then we can put that in the paper and notify people when that'll be.
Well, I was just thinking, where we have our new STEM or STEAM position, I wonder if that's something we could work out in-house with Ms. Taton? I'm not sure if we would run that by her for the technology piece to work in the lab and maybe set it up for sometime in October?
So, the lab is no longer at the lab?
Oh, it's not?
No.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know that.
Yep, so we made some changes in room assignments. So Mrs. Taton's class is more STEAM-oriented than computer lab. So, we would have to, we would have Chromebooks here. We just need to find probably this area to do it.
Okay, alright, so maybe the library?
I think Amy was looking at the library.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yep, because they already have the computers and they already have it set up for training.
Oh, the East Kingston Library?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I believe that's what Amy was doing, right?
That's-
The library?
Yep.
Yep, the in-town library.
Okay. Any other public input? Any other announcements from anyone? Alright, so financials, there won't be a financial report today, that'll be at the October 12th meeting. Dr. Ryan, office report?
Yes, thanks so much. The first on the agenda is approval of two anonymous donations. These are donations that I briefed the board back in the spring and we talked again about the summer. We were anticipating these. These are the result of an incident that occurred five or six years ago and the remainder of that is remain anonymous. They were made in the amount of $30,000 each. They were sent to the East Kingston School District, they've already been set aside. And they are restricted in terms of how they can be spent according to the donor. They're restricted to school students' supplies and technology. We have the letters and I believe I forwarded the letters to you as well in the packet to show you exactly how those can be spent. And so, in order for us to utilize, I have sent thank yous to the anonymous donors through their attorney on behalf of the board. Not that they've been accepted yet, but for thinking of you and thanking them for thinking of our students. We would need action from the board to receive those donations per our school board policy. So I would hope to have action this evening, if that's something that you'd be willing to do and make a motion on that.
We just make a motion to receive the funds, that's it?
Correct.
I make a motion to receive the funds, as you've defined.
I second the motion. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. I will alert the law firm and let them know that they were received and that we can provide periodic updates, such as our students utilizing what the funds are purchasing. I think that would go a long way with the donors. On October 13th, well, there are two presentations. The first one is September 26th, but the public presentation is October 13th, from the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project. They have been working around the state, making presentations on exactly how school funding works and breaking it down. This started a long time ago with attorney Andrew Valinsky and his team when they represented a few school districts, particularly Claremont School District, on adequacy aid and what inadequate education was and how much was being provided by the Department of Education for inadequate education. It's grown into nonprofit, where now they go around the educate communities on what goes into a school budget from the state's perspective. They have an entire program set up for us, first for joint board. We wanted to bring them in just for the joint board with information specific to our six towns. That'll be televised as well. So the board members from each of the towns can ask specific questions to the presenters on any of the data they see, because it's only gonna be about our six towns or our seven districts. The 13th is a public presentation on the, you know, school funding in general, again geared towards SAU 16, but not driven specifically for the boards, made more for the public. And so we wanna gather as many of the public as we can into the auditorium, Exeter High School, on the 13th. We've had one planning meeting with them, we have another coming up in a week to talk more about marketing, and they have a full staff. This thing has really taken off into getting the information out to our citizens on exactly how much money we get from the state and how much is left up to the local taxpayer to pay for inadequate education. I think it's eye-opening for a lot of people. They're gonna be providing opportunity for question and answer. And I think it's gonna be a really great night for everybody. So, I just wanted to make the board aware, I wanted to be public with it, so, because we're being recorded and this will be posted on our website. For anybody who's going to watch the East Kingston School Board, will be able to know that they can watch the presentation on the 26th of September. And again, they can attend in person the October 13th. They certainly can attend the joint board meeting as well. But the public presentation will be October 13th.
What time?
On the 13th, I believe it's at 6:00 PM. I'm gonna go ahead and double-check that, pretty certain it's at 6:00 PM.
I just had one question about the meeting. I guess, did they reach out to you to have the meeting, or did we reach out to them?
We invited them in and talked with our board chair, the joint board chair, if that's something that we could put on the agenda. He thought it would be a pretty good idea, as we're in budget season and you'll be getting the first draft of the SAU budget. We thought that it would be a nice way to coincide. Here's school funding in general and here's the SAU budget, since that's the topic for that evening.
Okay.
Yeah, and they did reach out to us to ask about the October 13th meeting. They were looking for a Seacoast venue and we said we'd be more than happy to host, because people from all over can come and see that. And it is confirmed at 6 o'clock. Andy?
6:00 PM.
Thank you. 6:00, you're welcome. Any other questions on that? And that's a live link on your agenda, so you can go to their website and you can review their information, who works there, things they've done in the past and so forth. There are two policies that typically we'd run through the policy committee and then bring to the board. These are two policies that we felt the boards needed to get directly in their first meeting. The first is policy ACDR, which is a special observance dates. Those are updated every two years. Those are dates, they're not all of the religious holidays. We do have a running list of those that Andreas Mejia has put together. Those are not policy, those are just for reference. This particular policy is one that we've had for several cycles now and it's renewed every two years. And what it does is just asks schools, teachers, to just be cognizant of significant observances such as Hanukkah, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Ramadan. And so, we did ask Ramadan, we added Ramadan in speaking with the Association of Churches in the area. And we've asked pastors and religious leaders, what are the days that are most significant that students could observe by not attending school, because they have services to attend? And these were the four that were named. So there were several others that we asked and they said, "No, don't let, that's not something they have to miss school for." But what we do ask is that we're just cognizant of people observing those days so that we're not having, say, you know, soccer matches on those days or having big tests on those days, big projects due and so forth and so on.
So it also includes fasting, when students are fasting for holidays? You know, they, they can often exhibit, you know, being tired and, you know, lack of energy. So, we always wanna recognize that as well.
Yeah, and I said before, I meant five, I neglected to say Passover. And you'll note that some of these also begin at sundown or end at sundown, and some are on weekend days. And so they don't necessarily affect a school day, but it's just that conscious level of, okay, if I'm gonna assign something over this weekend, I just wanna be mindful that I have students that might not be eating the entire time or until sundown. And so that would be one policy that we wanted to bring forward. The other is BEDH, which is not a new policy. It is a revision of our current BEDH, it's Public Input at Board Meetings. This is in response to RSA 18974 that was just passed, that states all boards will provide the opportunity for members of the public to comment on school district matters at all board meetings for a minimum of 30 minutes. So before, there was no legal requirement for boards to allow public input. It was something that was, the boards encouraged, because they wanted public participation. Now, what the legislation states is, you're required, it has to be for a minimum of 30 minutes. Therefore, what we've recommended is that we start that public input clock at the beginning of the meeting when the chair announces we're open for public input. And that 30 minutes continues while the, if there are no speakers or no additional speakers, the board continues with its board business. Should somebody walk into the room, the board chair would kindly pause the meeting, ask that person, "We're still within the public input period, is there something that you wanna add or something that you wanted to present?" They would then have, it still can be three minutes, that's up to the chair or the policy. Currently is three minutes. And then we would continue with board minutes, or board business until the end of that 30 minutes. So if somebody walks in an hour into the meeting and they wish to have public input, they wouldn't have that right under public input, but it would be at the discretion of the chair. So if the chair wanted to ask the board, "Do you wanna suspend the rules and permit public input?", you can do that. But the significance of this is that it simply guarantees a minimum of 30 minutes of public input and it requires that we have it at every one of our meetings. And that includes any committee meetings. So advisory groups are not considered committees. So as an advisory group, you do not, you're not required to have public input, but anything that is a constituted committee from the board should have the 30-minute public input. And if your meeting ends prior to 30 minutes, you need to wait. That was the one thing I've been trying to figure out with some meetings that do go very quickly. You do have to have at least now a 30-minute meeting to provide for public input. I didn't think this was a heavy lift for this board, because this board is always encouraged, public input. And so it really became the logistics of where in the agenda that it should be. And that's our recommendation, doesn't have to be what the board chooses, but we just have recommended to all of our boards that that public input be at the beginning of each agenda. The co-ops doing it a little differently. They're gonna do 20 minutes at the beginning and reserving 10 minutes for the end. And that's something that the board could consider as well. The only thing that I've recommended to the chair, the co-op, and we haven't had a co-op meeting yet, is if there are no speakers for that final 10 minutes, we do have to wait the duration of that 10 minutes.
If, if we ran it for 30 minutes at the beginning, we still have public input at the end, but it not be timed?
You could, and you could set it, that's correct, it would not, it would be unlimited time.
Okay. That might be a good idea, 'cause then if somebody comes in, we don't have to interrupt or anything like that, we can just have public input at the end as well, but not have to worry about getting out of here on time.
Yep.
So the key is, people need to be afforded the 30 minutes.
At the beginning, at the beginning, yeah.
Yes, so we do, we do it at the beginning.
Yeah, so you have your 30 minutes.
You get that 30 minutes, but if somebody comes in later-
After that 30 minutes?
After that 30 minutes, then we can just-
Sure.
We'll talk to you at the end. It still allows it.
You can put it right in the, you can put it in both, front and back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any issues with that, either of you?
So the one thing that I caught on here is, although such pre-registration is not required as a condition for offering public comment, you know, I just thought to myself, I think this is a great piece of legislation, because, you know, if someone comes in late or they don't get a chance to look at the agenda before they come and then they're like, "Oh, I wasn't planning on talking, but this is, you know, something that I could add a comment here." So my understanding is that 15 minutes into that 30 minutes, if something comes up and they would like to speak, that they would be able to have their three minutes?
That's correct.
So, what would we like them to do, just like raise their hand, or?
Be the discretion of the board chair.
I think so.
Yeah, maybe, I'm just trying to think of like, so it wouldn't be distracting, like-
Yeah.
Yeah, or if you would just periodically, if new people came in, then just like find a good spot?
Yeah. I think that'll work for the numbers we have. If we started experiencing, you know, larger turnout, then maybe we'd wanna, you know, discuss a bigger process for it, but-
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, the, the sample policy and the legislation does permit you use a sign-up. So at the meeting, that's not considered pre-registration. I don't really think we need to subscribe to that. I think when we had a steady stream of speakers in a larger group who wanted to attend, I think that was the right way to go, so that we got to everybody. But I just don't think that that's something that this board needs to do. And I think you're flexible enough and you want that engagement, where strict adherence to this is not something that I think anyone needs to worry about. I think the flexibility's in, within the board. So with those two policies, I would ask, because BEDH, the law did go into effect on September 6th, which is why we had public input at the very beginning and we noted the RSA, so that by law, last Tuesday, this policy did go into effect, which is why we are still on the clock for public input right now. I would ask that there be action on both of these policies this evening.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the policy ACD and ACDR and BEDH. All second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Superb, thank you. And so when we set the agenda, we'll just make a note to do beginning and end.
Okay.
Alright.
Perfect.
And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Alright.
So, where you have the per RSA 8974, is that referencing the 30-minute thing?
Yes, that was in reference to the law, because we hadn't asked the policy yet.
Just making sure.
Yeah, we're, just formality. You won't see the RSA on the agenda now that we have the policy.
Alright, so we have our meeting minutes from June 8th. Does anyone have any, any changes to those?
Yes, I have a change. For safety and security, I'm actually sitting in on that committee, so it should say Tiffany DeBrio and the comment that was attributed to that was my comment, not Mr. Herron's.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll make sure that Kayla, who still does our minutes, captures that. So if we just captured that on audio, she'll be able to make that adjustment.
That's all I had.
Right over there.
You did.
Yeah, we should probably change it on the agenda, too, right?
Either or, right?
I'll make a note to change it on the agenda for the next agenda, too, Tiffany, sorry about that.
Oh, no worries. This one's also missing members and administrators that were present, which we typically have at the top of the meeting minutes.
Yes, we do.
So she could just have that, whoever was present. Anything else? I'll make a motion to approve the June 8th meeting minutes with those changes.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Alright. And then we have our Wednesday, August 31st, the school board workshop meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes there?
I do not.
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Wednesday, August 31st, school board workshop. All second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Principal report?
Thank you. So, yeah, we've had an amazing first three weeks of school and it's really something we're all very proud of, that it's gone so well. We have welcomed new staff into our building. Jessica Casey and Erica Hill are two of our new special educators. Molly Norton is a new fifth grade teacher and Abby Sousa is our new first grade teacher and they are fitting in to the King Fisher way really quickly. And they've just seamlessly transitioned into our building and they are part of the reason why things have gone so smoothly to start. We have 25 new students that have joined our community this year. The majority of them are kindergarten, but we had some, some students in upper grades as well. We had our first meet and greet with all of our families the day before, the Friday before school started and our PTO sponsored some delicious treats for everyone and that was just a wonderful way to start our year. And we are so, so pleased that we were able to welcome back families for all school assemblies, which this year we're calling them COOL conventions. And it was a great way to start the year with our families there and getting families back into our building again is something that we are really excited about. Our enrollment, as of last Friday, we have 21 kindergarteners, we have 27 in first grade, 12 in second grade, we have 22 in third grade, 19 in fourth grade and 28 in fifth grade, for a total of 129. Our areas of focus this year, and I mentioned this at the board planning meeting, is our community data dashboard that will include not only the academic side of it, but parent involvement and many other areas like attendance and things like that that we're excited to get up and rolling with the rest of the SAU 16 as well. And we've talked a lot, you know, over the last year about multi-tier systems of support, which we have the acronym COOL as, as our kind of motto this year, King Fisher Expectations We Love, which revolve around being safe, respectful and responsible in our building. And the rollout so far with, which is a tier-one rollout with all of our students is part of the reason why we've had such a great start. We're using common language across the board, common expectations from kindergarten right through fifth grade with how we act and behave on the bus, in the cafeteria, on the playground, in the classrooms, bathrooms, hallways. And our MTSS team, all of last year, were the ones that developed this rollout for our staff and students to begin our year and it's been, it's been an amazing start. We have our first in-school COOL convention this Friday. It's kind of our kickoff with all of our staff and students that we're really excited about. Some of the maintenance and facilities updates that I wanted to kind of remind you that we did over the summer. We did have our ductwork cleaned and our air quality mold inspection done, which came back great. No issues at all in our building for air quality or mold. All of our classrooms now have the interactive panels that we had talked about last year to use the Unassigned Fund Panels to complete those projects, as well as air conditioning in the library and then one other classroom. We have three more classrooms and the nurse's office remaining to do to get all of our rooms with those multi-splits. And then the fence down to the road, almost at the end of the road, was also completed. And we made sure we left some space so cars could-
Called the Tiffany space.
Yeah. It looks really good. And I live on this road, too, so.
So, yeah, the one thing that I wanted to bring to the board's attention that was not on this report was taking a look at discussing purchasing a new sign for Outfront. It's a really dated sign, I think it's over 20 years old. And there's things starting to break and fall apart on it and I am going to be looking at getting some quotes on that and what that would look like to do a digital sign that we could control here in the school just from a laptop. And at our next week's PTO meeting, I'm gonna talk to the PTO to see if that's something that we could potentially split between the PTO and the school or do some fundraising to, to really get the communication that I think we're all talking about with our community. It's a great way to give our community the information they need to know what's going on in the school and it's a lot easier to do it at a moment's notice from a laptop than it would be sending Mr. Mizzi out there in three feet of snow sometimes to change those letters.
Those letters.
So anyways-
Hoping you have all the letters you need.
So, you know, we're gonna just, just see what that looks like and I'll talk about it next week with the PTO as well. And then I just wanna thank Mr. Mizzi and Mike Benjamin for making this place sparkle and ready to roll for our kids to come back in for the fall.
I'm gonna pile on that with how well yesterday went with the voting here. You wouldn't have known that there was school in session and voting going on at the same time. I came by, spent a little time here and it was just really easy to, easy to see the separation, I thought, that went into it. And Mr. Mizzi just said, "Yeah, this is how we used to do it, we did a couple of extra things, so it just worked out great." But, you know, I know Al-Nova, the cancellation of that with the weather was a bummer, but the fact that they were able to be in school, active learning and have voting going on at the same time is, you always worry, but it went really well. Any, any concerns from parents regarding safety or?
Nope.
Perfect, okay, perfect.
So, of course, I have a few questions. The COOL convention meeting that's happening this Friday, is that sort of like a morning meeting?
We're gonna do them monthly.
Monthly.
And to make sure that students aren't losing the same special UA all the time, And to make sure that students aren't losing the same special UA all the time, they're gonna be, some are gonna be morning, some are gonna be mid-morning, some are gonna be afternoon. So there's space throughout the year to make sure teachers aren't losing their preps all the time and kids aren't missing that same special.
Okay. Alright, so it wouldn't be that parents were, it's not all school assembly?
It's all, in-house, in-house school assembly.
Okay.
Yep.
So nothing that their parents would be able to come to?
For our first meeting, which is, which is Friday, there will be no parents there. We are gonna start infusing student talent into our COOL conventions.
Yeah.
Mr. K, our music teacher, is gonna be facilitating that, so kids are almost going to be auditioning to show true talent that we wanna showcase. And it could be things like singing, dancing, poetry, art, you know, anything where, where kids wanna show true talent, and that's gonna be infused into every COOL convention. And if, if students are, are showing their talent, parents of those students would be invited to come in and participate.
Okay. Okay, and then the sign, the purchasing of a new sign, do any of our other schools have a digital sign at this point? I don't think, believe that we do, but.
I suppose.
No.
I don't think so.
No, they have a manual sign.
Yeah.
You would be the first.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna be the first. I just really, we're such a small town, and again, living on the road and safety, you know, if you're kind of looking at an electronic sign, you know, the driveway to the schools here, and you have kiddos that live on Terrence Lane that walk across the street to get here. So I guess if I have to come over and put up the verbiage on the sign, I would totally volunteer to do that. But I do agree that the sign, it, you know, could need a refresh. I'm just not sure about the digital, and I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Yeah, I know. There was a lot of pushback on the digital sign at the fire station.
Yeah.
From the people in town.
Yeah.
That it was either on or too bright or too.
But it's also very useful.
It is. It's very easy to read.
You get a lot of information in there.
Yeah, right, because you can flash through too or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I've gotten information on it before, like, oh yeah, I'll pick up or whatever someday.
Yep.
So.
Right.
I'm for it.
Well, could, you know, just a thought, could we maybe borrow the fire station? They have a little sign that they prop up. If we're doing something big that we wanna get people's attention for, couldn't we just like bring it down and set it up, I guess essentially?
I, I've seen it. I don't know what the setup is like.
It is pretty easy to read when you are driving by.
I think we could probably just ask them to put something on. It's probably better there anyway. More people are gonna see it.
Oh yeah, that's a fair.
Yeah.
Yes, and I think that's a great idea. And then, but I do think our, our sign is, you know, looking like a, it needs a refresh.
Yep.
So. And then I have a few other questions. Brandon, so are we fully staffed?
We are short one para professional.
One para?
Interested, Tiffany?
I am not. Thank you though. I did love it, and it is a great job though. So and have we, so we're down some students and, you know, we have some new families joining. But I just wanted to know if we had lost any students to enrollment at Coastal Waters Charter School?
Not that we're aware of. We haven't had any, any record requests.
Okay.
From there that I'm aware of.
Okay, that's great. I hadn't heard anything. I was just curious. And then any new families leave for homeschooling?
New families? No.
Okay, and then have we had any families join back into the mix since like the pandemic and as we?
We have one family that works, we have spoken to about coming back in the fall.
Oh, nice.
Like later fall.
Yeah.
And we have one student that has been homeschooled that is coming back on Friday.
Okay.
Like in two days, that's coming back. So it'll, it'll change to one-thirty on Friday.
Cool. Alright, thank you. That's all I have.
So we're down one para. Are you having trouble hiring paras?
Yes, we're having trouble hiring paras. We're having trouble.
Other schools though.
What's that?
We're probably in the, in the best position of all.
If we only had to hire one para in our other schools, we'd be in such great shape.
I think we're really lucky that most of our paras here live in town, sent their kids through the school and haven't left.
We are.
Because the other schools don't.
And in doing a comparison yesterday of benefits and hourly wages, we're more than lucky.
Yeah, I mean.
Given the dedication of our paras to remain at East Kingston.
Are we way underpaying?
Yes.
Do we need to fix that?
We're preparing something for the board to consider. Later date as we get closer to budget development with the board. Brandon and I, in our discussion yesterday, wanted to look at what is it, is it comparable across the districts? It's, it's definitely the, East Kingston para professionals are the lowest-paid para professionals in the S A U. And so that's something I think we need to remedy. We don't need to give away the keys to the candy store, but they work so hard. And there should be no difference between the hard work they do here than there is in Exeter or Stratum. And so I think we need to reward them for that, as well as their commitment to our students here in East Kingston, instead of going off to Stratum or Exeter. So we're trying to, we wanna prepare a package for you to review and work, even though they're not an organized association as a bargaining unit. I think in good faith, I think this board's really interested in doing what's right by the paras as a whole. And so we wanted to put that for you and to consider and begin having that conversation.
And I would include in there all support staff, you know. Yeah, it's, it's our support staff group that is, is really important that we take a look at.
Did we lose a para because of pay, Better Pay somewhere else?
I'm not sure what her resignation letter, I don't remember what it said. I know we've lost two paras in the last year. I know one of them left because of Better Pay somewhere else. The other one that resigned just had a different opportunity.
Questions for Brandon?
I don't. Thank you. Alright, board committee assignments. I don't think any policy, I don't think any committee says that yet. Alright, you guys haven't met.
Is the search committee part?
Yeah, that's not on here, but yes.
Yes, so that should probably be on here, sorry.
Yeah, we'll make that a standing report out as well. It's also a board goal, so we're gonna wanna have a report out on it.
I just now realized that I should have taken, or should have prepared something on that. But we are meeting, we're gonna have. The committee is gonna act like the interview group. And then we're gonna have five other stakeholders that will do. What do we call them? Conversations essentially with the candidates, not official interviews. It's gonna be community members, it's gonna be teachers, it's gonna be support staff, admin. And I'm missing one, but there's gonna be five different groups. For the community members, we're gonna go out and find community members to participate. For the staff, the unions are gonna choose who, who is gonna represent them. And then the admin, I believe it's gonna be somewhere, you're gonna appoint somebody or some one of those lines. And then from there, they're gonna have interviews on one day or conversations on one day. And then from there, we're gonna do an official interview with the steering committee, which will be the interview committee at that point. And then from there, they will take that to the job board as the recommendation. And to reiterate, we are looking internally at this point. So all of the candidates will be from internal S A U sixteen.
Has the committee put together, I think we talked about this in joint board, but putting together a, a sheet that would kind of delineate all those dates for everyone, so everyone understands?
Yes, that got modified.
Okay.
It is not solidified yet.
Okay.
When it is, I'll bring it back to everybody.
Okay.
But it was really aggressive in hopes, it was too aggressive. And so we had, I'm forgetting her name.
Heather.
Thank you.
Heather, or yep.
We had Heather change it.
Okay.
And it's, she's brought us a new proposal, but it hasn't been approved or anything, so I don't wanna.
Okay.
But it got pushed out a little bit. So we're looking at doing a lot of that stuff in later October, so.
So how many applicants do we currently have? Have they already applied? Like, has it been posted internally? I guess, I'm just wondering where we are in the process.
I don't, I do not believe it's been posted. I have no idea how many applicants there are gonna be at this point.
Okay. Yeah, you're not sure if it's been posted internally yet?
I, at this point, everybody knows. I mean, yeah.
My understanding is all of the candidates, possible qualified candidates were informed.
Yeah.
Because I think Heather wanted to bring back to the committee the number of internal candidates that would exist.
Okay.
But I'll check right now and see if it's actually posted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember, yeah, the actual number, but I mean, it's expected at least a handful, if not more, so.
Oh, okay.
We'll see.
Okay.
So then I also want to talk about committee assignments. If we wanna change things up, I'd like to stay on the superintendent evaluation. I'm chairing that. And we developed a new process last year, so I wanna be able to stay with that committee and run through kind of what we did last year, what we wanna change. But wanted to see what you guys were interested in for our committees. Well, you've, and you also have the superintendent search, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think those two things are great. And then I don't mind staying on safety and security. And we're meeting on September twenty-ninth for that too.
Okay.
And.
Either of you for community engagement? Do you wanna stay on that? Do you wanna?
No, I'll keep it on.
Okay.
Keep it on.
Okay.
And then I know there was talk about maybe the S A U forming a new committee too, and I was interested in that.
Yeah, that was Molly O'Keefe emailed all the administrators yesterday, asking for representatives to join the S U sixteen wellness committee. That would consist of members from each school, so it would be some administrators, school board members from different districts, phys ed, teacher, health, nurses. So our nurse Rebecca Fornier and Tiffany both said they were interested, so I emailed Molly O'Keefe those names. So I'm not sure yet what that committee looks like, but potentially wellness as well.
Okay. And the only other thing that I should mention too is I believe I'm on the budget advisory committee too.
We see each other a lot.
Yes.
Tomorrow night starts.
Yeah, I mean, I went to every meeting last time round and I wasn't even on the board, but yeah, I'll be there. Yeah, if that works for everyone.
That's good, yeah. No, it'd be nice to have it reported back too.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe we could add those as committees next time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I added everything except the budget advisory committee, but I'll do that right now.
Okay.
Alright, I'll stay with policy committee and then we each got to spread it out.
Well, I think I technically have thirty one, possibly, but that's okay. I mean.
One's pretty short though, right? The budget one will be quick.
Yes, it, it will be quick, yeah.
Alright, I don't think I had anything else. Do you, do you have a date for community engagement? Do you have the next meeting planned or not? Not yet?
Do we?
Nope.
We should do that.
Nope.
Okay, alright. Alright, board goals, old business. So at our workshop, we developed our board goals. Dr. Ryan circulated them to us.
Should read the bottom of the packet.
Yep. Page fourteen. I reviewed these. I think these all look good. One suggestion I had for us board members was kind of for each one of us to take on one of these goals, to be the, kind of the person that, you know, oversees the goal throughout the year. Because I think based on what we had already kind of talked about, we already kind of have those thoughts. So for example, the goal number two is about community engagement. I thought that would be a good one for Andy to kind of, to spearhead, and, and that way ideas can, you know, flow through him from community members or your committee. I'd like to take the five-year capital improvement plan. I'd already had a, had a couple of conversations with Wayne already, but. And then I was hoping that you might take the.
Yeah.
The academic reporting.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't think, there shouldn't, there won't be too much to do on four for us as a, as a whole group, so.
Right, yeah, just get the report out.
Andy can report on that.
Yep.
Were you able to share with Wayne the sample?
Yes.
Good.
I did.
Perfect.
Yep.
That can be easily constructed.
Yeah. Yep. So I think if we can, it will include these as kind of a, you know, maybe separate from the committee meeting, if, we'll just have a separate line item. So that if we have anything to report, I know we won't always have something, but if there's anything that we wanna either make sure gets included in one of these, you know, goals or to report any updates or progress.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, and looking in the goals, I really am happy with the way that we all worked together to create these, and I think there's some good goals for the year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The language, did we capture the right language? Is it worded the way you all wanted it?
I didn't see anything necessarily that I would wanna change that really stuck out to me.
Okay.
No, I thought, I think it's good.
Yeah, perfect. We just need action on it, and then we'll put them on the agenda in the next meeting at the top for everyone to see.
I'll make a motion to approve the school board goals for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Any new business? Nope. I don't think we have any non-public.
We do not have a need to go into non-public today.
Okay.
Real quick, I wanted to give one quick update. We are looking at having the final announcement mid-November for the.
Superintendent.
So that's how, that's how far it's gotten, pushback.
Okay.
Just, it's not finalized, so that, not given an exact date, but that's roughly what we're looking at.
Okay.
And then I just had one question about our meetings. I noticed the time is changing to five-thirty, and I just was curious as to why. And maybe I thought maybe because of aftercare, because I know we were rotating towards the end of the year.
So we were always five-thirty, and then we moved to four because we were both coaching baseball.
Oh, okay.
We never would have been here. We never would have had a meeting.
Yeah, 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 no.
We did try last fall, we did, we were gonna do a five-thirty, three-forty-five and alternate those, because we were hoping we'd get more teachers. It didn't really, it didn't really pan that way, so, and I feel like this was just easier for community and families.
Yeah.
Yeah, we hear, we probably hear about it more from community members when we do the early one than anybody else when we do the five-thirty.
Even parents, the three-forty-five wasn't.
Yeah, that's what I mean. They didn't like it.
Yep.
That's what I mean.
Yep.
Yeah.
We heard negative feedback.
Yeah. No, it makes sense. I mean, I think that, you know, when it's really nice out, people.
I know, like today. It's always nice though.
Yeah.
It never rains on the school board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, you, the sun stays out longer and, you know, you don't necessarily wanna be coming in at five-thirty for a meeting when, you know, you could be grilling.
Yep.
So I, or coaching, or, you know, walking or any of that stuff. I, yeah, perfect. Well, thank you.
So our next meeting is October twelfth, at five-thirty. Yeah, nothing else? Make a motion to adjourn at six-nineteen.
Well done. Thank you, everybody.
You so much.
You're welcome.